Okay, item 10.
Stage three drought update and continuation of discussion on additional water use regulations.
Great, and I will say yesterday was Halloween and the city hall winner of the costume contest was someone with a massive rain cloud and rain, so we're trying everything possible. And with that, Mr. Hagmark.
Madam Mayor, council members, yes, do appreciate Ursula's outfit. Hopefully as a sign of times to come. So, got a long lengthy PowerPoint presentation for you today, we'll try to move quickly through it. We do have our water conservation supervisor here today and Tim Downey, the city's arborist, to talk about trees today. So we'll move through these pretty quickly, but our neck of California remains to be the epicenter of the current drought. And we continue to plan for continued drought conditions and recognize that NOAA right now is not giving us any optimistic hopes, but again, they were way off last year, so I would take all of this with a grain of salt. Conservation, the silver lining of this current drought continues to be a positive situation. The community racked up 41% conservation in September, which was very impressive given how warm it was. And keep in mind that our rate structure went into play in September, probably helped some with that. Our 12-month running average, which we're going to be talking about from now on, because that's kind of critical, is 35%. And what we'll be talking about today is moving that 12-month conservation average to 40%. Lake Kachuma sits at 7.3% of capacity. I do have a nice aerial footage to show everyone tonight, today, just kind of walk through its current condition, but the city does have some remaining water that we've been able to keep in the lake due to conservation, but we expect that water to be exhausted by December of 2016. Lake Kachuma is at a critical storage and conveyance through the lake of our imported water is essential. We are still working with the county right now on getting in place the new evaporation formula. As you may recall from past discussions, the current evaporation formula currently lies on any imported water. For the entire lake, all evaporation will go just on that imported water, which means that as fast as we can pump it in, it's going to disappear. And so what is proposed is an evaporation equation that will spread out those evaporative losses over the remaining water that's in the lake, including the minimum pool. It will take its own evaporation losses. It's a pretty substantial change, and we are eager to see that put in place. The plan is for it to take effect January 1st, and right now it's sitting with the county waiting for them to approve that move. Updated information shows the extension of the state water conveyance pipeline. It won't be required until the spring of 2018. However, we are moving forward with the design of that, and there's already been a kickoff meeting, just because there is so many stakeholders in making sure that that roughly two miles of pipe can be put in and placed should we need it by spring of 2018. Just a little reminder of where we are. This green line is the last drought in the 90s, and right here in year five was the miracle month of March, which turned that drought cycle around. And here we are with the black line, and we continue to monitor where this drought is going. Let's see how this works. So here we are, this is near the dam, and that black hose right there is the state water dumping into the lake. It is currently the tallest waterfall in Santa Barbara County, and that is the state water being delivered. And it's, in the big picture, it's actually a pretty small pipeline, but I think that's a 24-inch pipeline right there dumping into the lake. So it's footage that we captured in late September. You can see some of the islands starting to show up here in the lake. This is just in front of the dam. The park is right over here, but certainly parts of the lake that haven't been visible since the 1950s. In this, you can kind of see, it almost looks like topol lines, you can just see how far down the lake is. It's down about 100 feet from its spill elevation. Pretty dramatic bathtub rings. This is some footage from the dock, and you'll notice how long it takes us to go from the dock to the water. It's a pretty dramatic scene at this point, how far out the water is. This used to be the barge, or the, last summer, this is where the docks were. Now it kind of plunges down, you can see this little goat path that leads down to the docks, and you can kind of see the formation of the San Ynez River kind of coming back there. This is the current barge, our lifeline to keeping water, state water, imported water moving through to the south coast. It's located about 30 feet of water right here. And the pipeline runs along these piles right here, and it's about two miles from the barge to the tunnel. Here's where the barge was back in June, just a few months ago. We had dug out a hole before it went in, just so that we had a little extra room to work, and it was critical to being able to stay in this location. You'll notice that this pipe used to be hanging on the top of these piles, and now it's just sitting in the mud. You can see the north portal here. So this is north portal, surrounded by what used to be a lake, it's now Kachuma Meadows. The intake tower here is approximately 100 feet tall, just to kind of give you an idea of the height, but this here starts Teckalodi Tunnel, which is a seven-mile tunnel that goes through the San Ynez Mountains, comes out near Glenany. This was located here due to the ability to gravity feed to the south coast, there's no pumping under normal circumstances to get water. And then again, here's the last kind of frame of the intake tower, and just how far away the lake is from that tower now. Needless to say, it's a very challenging situation. Wanted to provide that video, because you used to be able to drive on the 154 and see the lake and just see how bad it was, and now you can't even see the lake from 154, so I thought it was pretty helpful to kind of put it all in perspective when we talk about a lake at 7%. What exactly does that look like? A little status update on the state water rights order, I'd mentioned it comes at a very interesting time. We've been waiting on this for roughly 15 years now for the state water rights order to get issued. It finally has been released, and we are feverishly looking, working to respond to the state water rights order. This is in a draft form right now, and unfortunately, they chose an option that wasn't listed. They chose kind of a hybrid option, and so we're trying to model what those impacts are going to be on future water supplies. We have requested an extension, and they've granted a 45-day extension to, right now to December 9th, and we're working closely with CCRB, which is made up of Montecito and Goleta Water Districts, to respond to this. Recap on imported water, we were very successful this last year at buying and or securing water. We were able to close the loop on about 7,265 acre-feet of water, and that water is now available in storage in San Luis Reservoir, and we are delivering it on a daily basis. We are planning on a 35% allocation for next year, and I think things have gotten off to an optimistic start in Northern California, so it's maybe possible that we'll get more of an allocation, but that really doesn't change our ability to deliver water to the lake, which is what our water supply plan is based on right now. We will be looking to secure a small amount of water this year, but I imagine it to be 1,000 acre-feet or less. To kind of recap on the delivery constraints, we have been working with CCWA, Central Coast Water Authority, to maximize deliveries to Kachuma, and they've made some great improvements to that system, but you can only push it so far. The city has a guaranteed capacity of 3,300 acre-feet a year, so that's what we know we can get. And right now, all the agencies are in similar situations, so they're all using their capacity, so we don't envision that will be any additional capacity that the city can take advantage of at this time. At this time, we do believe we have secured enough water to keep that pipeline full and to maximize the city's capacity into 2019. Gibraltar is, I think it's actually at 7% at this time, but it's outdated. And we are still trying to figure out what impacts we're going to see from the Ray Fire. I guess on the brighter side of it, because we did, part of the watershed was burned, we do anticipate that we should see higher runoffs this year. Unfortunately, that runoff will be laden with sediment and organics, which will make it more difficult to treat, and of course diminish the capacity in Gibraltar. The burn area report estimates that we could lose up to 500 acre-feet of capacity in Gibraltar, and we're sitting just currently under 6,000 acre-feet of capacity right now. Groundwater wells, this is a little updated information from our last presentation, all eight wells are in operation. There are two storage basins, groundwater basins, and we'll talk first about Storage Unit 1, which underlies downtown area, and this basin is currently at 30% of capacity, which is projected remaining yield of about 3,000 acre-feet. And we're currently extracting about 2,000 acre-feet a year. Sufficient water, based on our hydraulic, our model that we built with USGS, we have passed the threshold where we should be expecting seawater intrusion. We do have Sentinel wells in which we are monitoring that and haven't seen a significant increase yet, but we do anticipate seeing that soon. As for the Foothill Basin, it's currently at 35% of capacity with the remaining yield of about 2,000 acre-feet. Again, these projections are based off of our groundwater model that we've just recently completed, and we're currently extracting about 1,000 acre-feet a year. So based on our current extraction from these groundwater basins, we have about a year and a half, two years worth of supply left in these, in the ground. Both basins are approaching historical lows, and our current water supply planning does anticipate reduced production going forward. D-SAL project, there's been a lot of action offshore with the arrival on October 26th of the barge. This barge will be out there into December, and it is loaded with all the pumps, screens, and piping that are needed to complete the intake work out there. Work is scheduled to be done mid-December. This is one of the items that's on the critical path. We'll be watching this closely and keeping the council informed as to the status of this. We should have actually a lot to report on December 6th, which is our next drought update. Schedule right now, a contractor is currently updating it again, but we do anticipate some level of delay past the late January startup. Right now, our best estimates are somewhere between mid-February and late March. It's about a month and a half window, and that depends on how favorably things go with the offshore work and then with the startup. Again, keeping in mind, this is a very complex project that, under normal circumstances, would take a year and a half to two years, and we're trying to get it done sooner. So it's complicated, there are a lot of vulnerabilities, and we'll try and keep the council informed as quickly as we can on this issue as long as things unfold. We also have been working on an effort for expansion. As you may recall, when we went out to bid initially, we had the contractor give us pricing for a facility that produced 3,125 acre-feet, which is what they're doing now. We also had them give us pricing for 7,500 acre-feet, and the entire design had to take into effect that they could potentially take the facility all the way up to 10,000. We are beginning work again on the expansion of the treatment side and getting fresh numbers from the contractor, IDE, on what it would take to get there, so that we can contemplate this in the spring, should we need to move forward with next level of expansion. At this time, we don't know if it's 7,500 or something less. I hope that we would never have to go above 7,500 next spring, but we'll be looking at that. We have also taken a look at conveyance. This is a major hurdle to the next increment of expansion in the sense that we cannot absorb much more D-SAL water in the low zone without having to build some type of conveyance system. We do have some, a concept in mind now that potentially could be a lot more simplistic than the concept that we're looking at before, which would take it all the way up to the South Conduit, South Coast Conduit. This concept is going to try and get the water back up towards Ceder. We are continuing to develop that, and I'm hoping we'll have confirmation on the concept in December. Our whole goal, though, being able to have like a complete package with costs and kind of general layout by spring, so if we need to contemplate this, we can. Did want to let the council know, there's been a lot of discussion about where we are with renewable energy for D-SAL, and we have the city's energy manager lined up to come speak in December and provide an update on where we are with a lot of the efforts to try and power this facility long-term with renewable energy. With that, he'll be looking, providing an update on community choice aggregation, his work with Elstero Cogen in increasing methane production, energy offset credits, solar PV sites, and battery storage. So we'll have a lot of good information in December to kind of update the council and the public on. So this gets us to our current water supply strategy, and what we have here is our monthly supply mix going out, and what we've recognized is this shortage in August, September, and October. This shortage adds up to about 300 acre-feet of water. This is what we're currently going to be focusing the rest of our discussion on, is how to address this shortage. Not included in this shortage is the need to also build up a contingency. What we've kind of blown through a lot of our contingency over the last two years is this drought has continued to exceed all expectations. This is what our storage in Kachuma right now is projected to look like. We did get confirmation in January that they're not going to be doing the state water project shutdown, so this will likely move up by about 200 acre-feet, which, actually won't be 200, it'll probably be closer to 100 acre-feet, but it won't be as close to zero as we were projecting. But we still are recognizing the shortage, and this is this part where, going into the summer, we would like to see somewhere in the order of 700 to 1,000 acre-feet of water in storage to help us buffer the peak and peak summer demands. So our proposed water strategy is to move the community. We are in year six right now, move the community to a 40% 12-month running average conservation target. This will allow us to meet that peak demand and ensure we have adequate supplies for the remainder of the year. What it does is it basically addresses this peaking right here in August, September, and October. So to get there, the demand reduction is our strategy. We feel like we've tapped out a lot of this available supplies and being able to peak The city faces a worsening supply situation and shortfall, and we need to build contingency. So our goals for the new demand reduction measure was to protect the community's investment in trees and shrubs, minimize impacts to economic activity in the community, and generate 800 acre-feet of new savings, which translates to 40% conservation. Staff has estimated the savings from a turf grass watering ban is somewhere between 500 and 1,200 acre-feet a year, and we've, again, that's an estimate, and it's based, a lot of people, as we've talked about before, have already let their turf grass go, so, and then there's folks that, you know, unfortunately, we're not sure how responsive they'll be to this, so we've got a kind of a range that we're thinking, we're looking for. In your packet, there is a summary of the proposed draft resolution. We went through and kind of redlined what we're proposing under the 40% conservation target. Requiring the use of recycled water for all construction activities for dust control and soil compaction seems like an easy one to grab. Most people are using it, but there are a few projects that, because of their distance from the recycled water system, were not, but I think given the current situation they were in, I think there's grounds to require all projects. I think when we looked at it, there was, unless you get up way behind the Riviera, most projects were within a mile of the recycled water system connection. And then again, general ban on irrigation of turf grass with potable water. We do have them exceptions, playing fields, schools, childcare centers, and that are used for active recreation. Keep in mind that most schools and most city parks are already watered with recycled water, which would be exempt. Recreations at publicly owned parks and open spaces, again, an emphasis on spaces that are actively being used, and we want to encourage that and make sure they're safe places for the public to use. We do believe that's a good exception to the ban. Golf course putting greens and tees, watering of certified water-wise grasses. We've been promoting for years that there are some really great grass choices out there that need to be watered once a month. They use a fraction of what the Marathon sods and other lawns, turf grasses would use, and so really wanting to continue to support that. And then turf areas directly related to business activities, recognizing that there are some turf grass use that is pivotal to business activity, and working with those certain customers to exempt them, but also make sure that they're, as a property as a whole, they're on target to meet the 40% conservation goal. Our schedule, recommendation for adoption of turf grass watering anticipated December 6th, we'd like to bring that back, and then the regulations take effect, will be a grace period, and take effect January 1st. We believe that kind of timing is important, because it provides a smooth transition for the community, allow us a time for the community to make changes to their irrigation systems, maybe they want to do some type of replanting, maybe they want to do something different with their landscaping, and they'll have some time to kind of make those changes before the warm summer kicks in and the irrigation season is here. Allows the opportunity for public outreach and education, and I think puts the city in ultimately the best position possible for potential year six of the drought. Keeping in mind that we can always, if we do get significant rainfall, we always can come back and revisit this if their situation improves. Enforcement, current water use regulation enforcement is complaint-driven. That was based on the feedback we received last time we met, and we believe that, based on the community's success so far at conservation, that the complaint-driven enforcement will be very effective. Recommending continuous use, recommending continuing this complaint-driven enforcement. And just kind of a summary of what our municipal code looks like right now, we have, basically, the first complaint is a courtesy notice typically followed up with a phone call or letter emphasizing education. The second, which is the first violation, is a door hanger and warning, and then subsequently the fines ramp up until we potentially could shut off the water. Just to let you know, so far, we have not had anyone go past the first violation. People have been more than, the community has been very responsive to this, typically bring it to people's attention, they are eager to make the changes, because they're not, they're not wanting to pay for wasting water, and so we've had a great relationship so far with those who've, who we've had complaints. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Downey to talk about outreach.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Tim Downey, the city arborist. The Parks and Recreation Department in 2014 developed a drought action plan where we prioritized where we would use water and where we would find savings for water. We also, in that year, developed a historic and specimen tree drought action plan, which calls out each of the designated trees and talks about their condition, their health, the monitoring, and the constraints and actions that we proposed for those during this drought. This Parks and Recreation Drought Action Plan in relation to irrigation outdoors outlines where we prioritize our water. And as Mr. Hagmark mentioned, those are in the sports field turfs, the reservable event spaces, and in locations where those are, those grasses are important and exempt. The turf grass in parks are limited, as I just mentioned, to where fields are used for recreational activities, those in areas inreservable for events such as weddings and whatnot. The department is prioritizing water for trees, that's primarily where we're using our water in Parks and Recreation. We deliver those through water truck and two water trailers and hoses and probes, and in some locations, the planters are specifically designed for irrigation of shrubs and trees.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Downey, you were talking about potable water?
Potable water, yes, sir. So our primary effort as far as watering trees has gone to watering street trees. And in those situations, we're increasing the amount of water that we're providing. In non-drought years, we have one staff member that works full-time to provide water for young trees that were newly planted. We've expanded that to include all the historic and specimen trees, trees that are rare, we only have, some trees we only have one of in the city, trees that are susceptible to drought stress and insect attack, and those that are more used to climates that get a lot more rain than we get here. The water is supplied by a water truck and two trailers with staff members, and within parks, those rare trees are supplied by irrigation systems and via hose and probes. We've also implemented some water-saving devices, or water-delivery devices, I should say, watering bags on young trees, and an irrigation, or, excuse me, a barricade device that we've utilized as an irrigation device that we call Irricade. We fill it with water, and there's a valve that can be turned on, and the water's delivered slowly, so that it penetrates the soil, and I'm going to get into that in a little more detail in the next slide. We also have provided some community outreach. Staff personally met with those who manage trees that are on the historic and specimen tree list and discussed that watering with them, and how they can assure that they're going to preserve those trees as best possible. So in this slide, we have the two waters, our time-saving devices. A normal watering of a young tree with a, with the water truck, you stick a probe in the ground, and it takes about 15 minutes to water that tree. With these devices, we can fill that water bag up in, you know, five minutes' time, and we're moving on, and it delivers the same amount of water. So we've implemented these devices to save us time and therefore allow us to get to more trees. The slide on the, or the picture on the left is the Irricade that I mentioned. From a generous donation of the Pearl Chase Society, we purchased 56 of those that have been placed along the historic Annapolis Stone Pines. The, they've been effective. In my opinion, we have forestalled the death of many of those trees by adding this water. The public does give us calls about these bags. Where can we find them? Where, you know, how can we help? This gives us further opportunity outreach to citizens to discuss the importance of watering their trees. The, Ms. Ward and I are going to be looking into reaching out to local garden centers to ask them if they could stock devices such as this and water probes that we recommend that citizens use for their trees to provide water deep down where the tree needs water. So with that, this slide kind of demonstrates where it's important to water trees. Now, in order to understand this, turf grass has very shallow roots, one to two inches primarily into the soil. Overhead irrigation waters that deep quite effectively. Trees benefit greater from water that they Trees benefit greater from water that they don't have to compete for, deeper than the turf irrigation gets. 95%, excuse me, 95% of all tree roots are in the top three feet of soil. That means that there's roots down below the turf grass roots that could benefit from deeper irrigation. In the slide here, we've circled a couple of areas. These are the best areas to water trees. These are the areas where the feet of roots are in relation to the tree. And again, deeper than the turf grass roots. So our message to citizens and, you know, other governmental agencies and staff is, let's water trees deeper than the turf gets so that the tree can benefit the greatest amount from the water that's supplied. And with that, I'm going to pass it on to Madam.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Madam.
Do you want to ask a question?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. So why is potable water being used as opposed to recycled water on the street trees?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, the recycled water is only available to fill up in a couple of locations in town. Potable water is available throughout town, through our hydrants. The other problems are recycled water have a number of solids that are in them, which actually fills the pores of the soil and create, makes it even more difficult to get water to the trees. Recycled water is a good source of water for non-drought times, but during a drought, it actually exacerbates the problem of, it makes water less available for trees.
Do you have kind of an estimate of how much potable water is being used? Is it a relatively small amount, or I need a scale to understand how much potable water's being used in your operation to water those street trees? Does anybody, and if you don't know that now, that's fine, I can get it another time.
I don't have those figures with me, I'm sorry.
Ms. Mario? Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Downey, some people are under the impression that the trees get, the roots go all the way down into the aquifer. That's not exactly true, or maybe it is. What's your comment?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, tree roots, when they're saplings, they develop a taproot that grows down. And then, once it starts to develop lateral roots, it senesses that taproot and doesn't use it any longer. And this is because the trees grow roots where they can find air and water, just like, just like human beings, trees need air and water. Well, in the natural environment, where trees find water and air is near the surface of the soil. So unless there is a high water table where the tree finds that source, the more common practice is for the tree roots to be in the top three feet of soil.
Oh, okay. Just the, people are focused on our water issues, and it, now I understand our groundwater supply is being used, and so it's good to let people know where the trees are getting water. But I guess what I'm taking away from what you're saying is, if we don't water grass, that water will be available for the tree in the upper area, right? Just, or the, closer to the surface?
Mayor Schneider and Councilmember Mario, in order to get water down deeper to the trees, some turf will be watered, yes. So there will be turf that receives some benefit from that water, but our message is to water much deeper to the areas where the tree doesn't have to compete with the turf grass for that water.
Got it. Okay, I got it. Owen, thanks. And this is good information for our residents? You said citizens, not everybody's a citizen. Thanks.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Downey, at the risk of making you repeat yourself, I want to go back to your comment about how the reclaimed water is actually not as useful in drought times as it is in other times. And is that because of the cellular structure of the plant? Is it the cellular structure of the soil itself? What restricts the ability of the water to be nourishing that, that we do with the reclaimed water? Because we have a surplus, we can produce more reclaimed water than we actually use, but it's just a little frustrating to hear that we can't use it effectively.
Mayor Schneider and Councilmember Rouse, another point that I'll bring up that I didn't earlier is when you put reclaimed water into a tanker truck, that, unless the tanker truck is agitated, which ours are not, those solids settle, even with driving and delivering them. So it builds a sediment in the truck as well, which rots out the tank quicker and then provides less, less water to be able to support over time, unless the tank is rinsed out. The research has shown that if a tank isn't agitated, the sediment builds up rather quickly, and the ratio should be to use one tank of recycled and rinse it out with two tanks of potable water, just to keep from that sediment building up. The real issue, though, is these, a lot of these salts, or solids in the reclaimed water are salts, which hold onto water. And may, salts tend to hold onto water more tightly than soil particles. So as you water with reclaimed water, the salt builds up in the soil over time and holds on to more of the water, so therefore the tree has less water that it can access. In addition to that, reclaimed water is a good choice when we have ample rainfall because the salts get leached out of the root zone in those situations. And as I just mentioned, when we don't have ample water to leach the soil out, they build up and it just makes, fills the air pores to the point where there isn't available water that the tree can get.
Okay, well, so it's the buildup of salts is actually the target problem, then? Over time, the accumulation of salts, because, I mean, I know other communities have purple truck programs, but I don't know how they combat this. Because I mean, it must be the same problem, because what you're talking about, we need to use reclaimed water only when there's ample rain, it's a little counterintuitive. So I'm just kind of curious about, you know, I've asked the question before, and you guys have tried to answer before, and some I just don't get it, but the buildup of salts, I understand, I know that's why we can't use it on golf course greens, but we do use it on the golf course turf, right?
That's correct, Member Rouse. The, if I can describe this in a little different way, the trees during the drought are stressed. And salts built up in the soil is another stress factor. So when you have a stressed tree, that's not the appropriate time to try and use a solution that exacerbates the problem. So that's why I say in non-drought years, it's less of an issue because the tree's not stressed so much, and we have other sources to leach the extra salts out of the soil.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, maybe I can help too. Mr. Downey's focus, a lot of his program on the most sensitive trees in the urban forestry. So I think for the majority of trees, recycled water is just fine. There's a, there isn't a significant issue at all. We've been actually doing a lot of studies after recycled water first went online for the city in 1989. We did almost 10 years of studies about the buildup of salts in the soil and what impact they have, and we could not discernibly tell for the majority of species that there was any, any impact at all from the salts. And again, I think we have some pretty good data on that. I think what Mr. Downey is talking about is particularly sensitive trees that he's looking to keep alive, you know, I think there's a little more tolerance, and he's probably looking more at that than normal trees. I think an average mature tree, it would be just fine on recycled water.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few trees that I wanted to ask you about. The Morton Bay fig, are we taking special care of that?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hotchkiss, yes. In the Historic and Street Drought Action Plan, we identify all the historic and specimen trees and how we're monitoring and providing irrigation for all those trees. So that is one of the trees that's specifically called out in that report.
And are the trees in the Douglas Family Preserve in that category also? Do you know, there's some wonderful trees up there?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hotchkiss, the, although we don't have those trees in the Historic and Specimen Tree Drought Action Plan, they are part of the trees that we manage through the Parks and Recreation Department's water drought strategy. And we do monitor those trees as well. Just like any tree that might show drought stress, we're going to do our best to provide water to the, to those.
How are they doing up there? Haven't been recently, so I don't know.
They appear to be faring fairly well.
Okay. And we pay special attention to the stone pines along Annapremo, is that correct? Near the high school?
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hotchkiss, yes. Those trees are the ones that I mentioned, we had the irrigades along. We're providing weekly water to those trees in areas where we have the ability to do that. We have limitations out there because of hardscapes, driveways, some parkways that are filled in with hardscapes. So we're providing water where we can, get the best bang for our buck, and still get it in a location where there are roots that can absorb that water.
I'm not sure you're the man to ask, but I will anyway. For people that are worried about their trees at home, is there some online access to help them know how to properly water their trees?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Hotchkiss, that feeds directly into what Ms. Ward is going to be covering, so.
That wasn't a setup question either, so go ahead.
Councilmember Hotchkiss.
One quick question from Mr. Hart, and then we'll go right to continue.
I messed up the setup, but, so I have a forest question as opposed to a tree question. If you step back and you look at the urban forest, and you have this special category of specimen and historic trees that you're taking extra care of, you're taking extra care of the young trees, what percentage of the trees, you know, in the city are really struggling and in jeopardy of dying as opposed to the ones that you're, you know, have the resources to take care of? And what I'm trying to get at is, I know there is very limited resources that you have to deal with, and you're doing the best you can. So I'm not criticizing your ability to do that. I just need to understand, you know, is there something we need to do in terms of adding additional resources as the drought continues to increase your effort and ability to save more of those trees? Because losing, losing trees is really expensive in the long run. And there is a tension between how much water we have, now that I understand we're using potable water to do this, and whether we even have that water to do that. But I need to understand where that sits. You know, are we just doing what we're doing because that's all you have the money for? Or are you doing all you're doing because that's all you really could do?
Mayor Schneider and Councilmember, the, I can address that in a couple of ways. The Parks and Recreation Department's drought action plan identifies specific trees that we're providing water for. Those trees are the trees that we anticipated would be the most susceptible to drought. We're currently evaluating how we can expand that plan to increase trees that might need water. And the other way that I can describe that, in fiscal year 14 through 16, we lost 560 501 of those we lost because they died. In the previous three fiscal years, we lost, let me check my figure here, 526 trees. I don't have data as to how many of those were because they died or for other reasons, but I do know that 36 of those, 526 trees, were removed because of a large storm event. We lost 36 trees in that one storm event. So that gives you kind of an idea of that we're losing trees more rapidly than we used to.
Because it was a three-year period versus a two-year period? Similar number of trees, but?
Both three-year periods.
Well, then it actually is pretty consistent, isn't it? Did I miss something? You said 560 trees from 14 to 16, and 530 trees?
It's 526. And again, 36 of those were lost in one day, in one event. So that gives you an idea that there was quite a bit fewer, fewer trees removed.
But that does help me. I mean, that sort of puts it in order of magnitude. It's not, you know, like 50 times or something like that, as the drought is progressing year to year, it is, you know, 10% more on an annual basis, which is significant, and we don't want the trees to die, but, but it isn't like the entire, because how big is the entire urban forest? Is there?
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, the entire urban forest is estimated at 50,000 trees.
Okay.
Public urban forest, not, not private trees. To show a pattern, over the fiscal years 14, 15, and 16, respectively, we had 131 trees die, 180 trees die, 190 trees die, and as the drought worsens, that number is going to continue to grow and expound because as they become more stressed, we're going to lose more and more trees as a relation to that.
Okay. And you are taking steps to evaluate that and potentially have additional resources to address that need if that presents itself. Ms. Zachary, it looks like you want to jump in here, too.
Mayor Schneider, Councilmember Hart, councilmembers, there's a couple of things we've done since we prepared our first drought action plan. Number one, we have a dedicated water truck, we, and also have a dedicated water trailer. We've increased the use of the water trailer. The truck is used full-time. We also purchased an additional water trailer in fiscal year 15, with the idea that we could then target certain trees, whether they were in park areas, which we may be irrigating less, and we wanted to focus on those trees, and then also street trees that we wanted to focus on more. Some of the things we grapple with in giving you numbers is it can take a while for a tree to actually die, and it could be under a certain amount of stress before the drought, and the drought's kind of the last step. We also have an urban forest that is young trees and old trees, and not so much in the middle trees, and so we're also faced with those situations. We have done a lot of review of our street trees, where they're located, what the parkways look like, what kind of infrastructure conflicts we have, with the idea that if we were to go in and support tree care over time, and this is outlined in our Urban Forest Management Plan, we have steps that we would take, whether it's increased watering, removing hardscape and parkways. Right now, we're looking at, do we take that third water trailer and go from 50% time operational to 100% time operational? So from 20 hours a week to 40 hours a week. And similarly, our second trailer isn't always used 40 hours a week because it's by our one small tree care specialist who also has to care for small trees. And so we're balancing both the watering objectives and also the tree care objectives. I can say we've increased our water use and our watering of trees by 67% since 2013. It essentially represents about 2% of all the water the Parks and Recreation Department uses. That's through our water trucks. So as you can imagine, in park areas where we're irrigating, whether it's with recycled or potable water, there are trees that are benefiting from that. And there are park areas where we are supplemental watering with a hose because those trees aren't necessarily getting as much irrigation. And then just really quickly back to Councilmember Hotchkiss's question about the Douglas Family Preserve, there is no irrigation at that park. So there, the trees weren't irrigated before the drought, they're not irrigated today. And it's part of the Douglas Family Preserve management plan that we wouldn't move forward and do those types of infrastructure improvements. The one water source is for dogs at the park.
Are you talking about Douglas Family?
That's correct.
There's no irrigation there at all?
Correct.
So I guess, you know, we don't have the time today to go into real detail about this, but if you could send me some information about this, you know, just to understand better, you know, what the strategy is for all the trees, and, you know, what percentage you're getting to, and what percentage is in the specimen and historic tree category as opposed to, you know, just being reliant on neighbors or the weather, so I could understand better how this goes on in time.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, we're actually in the process of doing kind of a status report.
Okay.
On where we are, and we have it in draft format. Our plan is to take it to the commission in December, however anticipated. Our plan is to take it to the commission in December, however anticipate having something ready much more in advance of that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, let's finish the presentation, and we'll get back to questions at the end and then public comment. So go ahead, Ms. Ward.
In terms of helping private trees survive the drought, we're pleased to report on an outreach project that we're undertaking this fall and winter with Public Works, Water Resources, and Parks and Recreation Forestry Division. So one of the more common questions and concerns that we hear from our community is how best to water their trees. So we're developing a comprehensive flyer with information on where to water trees, how much to water them, how often to water, and how to spot signs of stress. We have additional information on our website, including Frequently Asked Questions section on tree care. We're also going to be creating a new tree care video. We have an existing video that's been well-received, but we're going to create another video that incorporates signs of drought stress and also demonstrates specific watering techniques that people can replicate at home. We're also going to develop some public workshops in which to disseminate this information, demonstrate techniques, and answer questions from the public. The flyer's almost complete, the website's almost complete, and we'll be rolling those out in the next couple months. In addition to help saving trees and saving water, the city is always here to help our community save water with a variety of programs through our Water Conservation Program. Our most popular program is the Free Water Checkup Program, which is available for all water customers, residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera. And it's a one-on-one customer service that's really tailored to each customer's property and their concerns. The checkups we're conducting have more than doubled since pre-drought, as you can see. Another popular program is our Landscape Rebate Program that we've been running since 2009. This is a customized rebate per property. It can include water-wise plants, irrigation system, pressure regulation, mulch, and more. The average water savings per customer is about 19%. And as you can see, this program has grown substantially with the number of rebates issued per month. Pre-drought, we averaged about four per month, and now we're at about 30 per month. We've been very busy. We're very proud of our programs. We're really pleased with the customer response. I hear great feedback from customers each week on how much they appreciate our staff in the field, how much they appreciate our staff on the phone, and all of the programs that we have to offer. As our supply situation has become more challenging, staff has needed additional help with outreach support. We have a current contract with Katz and Associates to assist with desalination outreach, and we're requesting to amend this contract to include support related to drought and our water supply challenges and messaging to the public. The scope includes strategic public outreach plan for drought, educational messaging for our water supply challenges, and media relations. And we're proposing to increase the contract by 52 to 94, which includes some funds for extra services as well.
So financial impacts, we touched briefly on this last time. What does it mean to move the community to a 40% conservation target? And it is in a, if we were doing it for a full year, it's about a $3.2 million revenue loss. Given that we're implementing about halfway through the year, we're looking at about a $1.6 million loss for FY '17. At this time, we are recommending the use of reserves, the time that it would take to get in place a drought impact fee, and the time to basically notice that. We just don't feel like we could get there quick enough. We are currently coming to next week with the FY '18, a contract to start work on the FY '18 water rates. It will include looking at a drought impact fee as well that could potentially be used in future years. But again, what a drought impact fee is, is really a fixed amount that would be added to the unit of water used, all units of water used, and it would be meant to offset the revenue loss from conservation. And again, we're not the only agency that has looked at this, and I think Cventura and GOLIDA have a drought impact fee at this point. Rationing, wanted to close the loop on rationing. What is rationing? We do believe rationing is the option of last resort to reduce water demands. We are not considering it now, however, may be necessary if drought conditions worsen. We are still working on this effort and hope to have something this spring to look at. But it basically establishes a water budget for every customer in the city, roughly 27,000 customers, each having their own water budget. Again, some of them would be lumped together, but as you can imagine, it's a little challenging to manage that. And with that, based on the numbers we've looked at, the average user would not have sufficient water to do much outdoor watering if we were to go to a rationing budget at this point. And the other challenge is, is with these rationing budgets, you can petition them. There is a whole hearing that goes along with them if you feel like, you know, you had a leak. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of staff manpower that has to go behind making a rationing plan work. So we're pulling that together, and we'll have something in the spring for more discussion should we need to pull the trigger and do that. At this time, that ends our presentation, and we're here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez.
To the arborist, Mr. Downey, I had two questions. One, I didn't see the Milpus trees in the Historic and Specimen Tree Action Plan. Is there anything we need to know about those trees?
Madam Schneider and councilmembers, the Milpus trees are not on that designation list. The trees get on that list through a process of review. They're recommended to, eventually to council for adoption. The trees on Milpus have not been recommended for adoption on that historic or specimen tree list.
So what does that mean?
Means they don't have that special recognition of being a historic or specimen tree. Those are specific lists of trees that have been given that designation. It is 12, I believe it's 12 entries. One of those entries is the 56 trees on East Santa Fe Mu, but it is a short list of trees that have been given that actual designation.
Right, and so the characteristics of that are just, they're not applicable in this situation?
You have Mr. White kind of bouncing over here, wanting to...
The Milpus trees, as well as the Correo Street trees, which are their cousins, as well as the Upper State Street trees, which are more cousins, are some of the more notorious trees in Santa Barbara. And it would be good for you to get the conversation, the full conversation of them offline. They are a very troublesome tree, obviously very pretty, but they have lots of problems. So anyway, it's a great topic for, they have been, the controversy has been how to get those changed out in a humane way, where we're not just making it street barren, but...
Is one of those, one of the complicated part of this which is relevant today, is any of the drought-related stress causing more damage with the tree roots to infrastructure, private or public?
Madam Schneider and Councilmember Dominguez, I'm not quite sure how to answer that question, other than to say that trees, when they are stressed, grow slower, which means that their roots also grow slower. So the drought actually would have a reverse impact on the amount of infrastructure damage in one way. In another way, young trees develop their roots where they can find air and water. And in a drought situation, if that water that's available while they're developing is only found on the surface, then that's where they're gonna provide their roots, which then has implications in the future for higher infrastructure damage because the water available to them is much shallower.
That's not the issue here because these are older trees?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, we have, just from the wastewater's perspective, we do see trees throwing, when they're under stress like that, throwing more energy into root development that is around laterals, private laterals and sewer mains. And so it does lead to additional cleaning and potential blockages that we've been aware of. And so it is a, it is a hot issue, and I think the tree is obviously in a stressed condition and looking for water.
Was this implicated in the line that broke a few weeks ago on Milpus?
No, that was a water main break, so something separate.
Okay. And then the other question is, so we have about 250,000 trees that are not city trees. Are, do you know anything about the status of those trees? Are they're kind of samezies with us?
Madam Schneider, Councilmember Dominguez, I can only give you general impressions for that. It's not something that we track necessarily. But one of the, one of the provisions of the municipal code protects trees on private property in certain situations. One exemption to the requirement for a permit is if a tree dies. But that does require that they provide some notice to the city that they're going to be removing that dead tree. We've had increased numbers of those notifications. So I would anticipate, and based on my own observations, that the 250,000 non-publicly-owned trees are receiving similar impacts that the city is, but not quite to the level that we are. Part of the problem that we have with street trees is that a good portion of the roots is covered by hardscapes. Private trees tend to be up in people's yards where there's less hardscapes covering the roots. So they have a little better access to water than our street trees do. So I don't have actual numbers, but that's just my impression. They're not losing them quite at the rate that we are for trees that are in the constraints of a parkway situation.
Has there been a spike in permit applications?
No, there hasn't been a spike in...
Thank you.
Mr. Rouse, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Quick question, Mr. Hagmark. So at one point in time, the Heal the Ocean mentioned it, but we talked about the treatment of, the further treatment of recycled water or non-potable water. And what Mr. Downey described was a heavy presence of solids and salts. Is there anywhere in your miniscule workload you have there that you guys are talking about or have thought about or have considered the further processing of our recycled water as we are now, so that it would be more usable in a broader scope, even in these drought times?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, yes, we did look at that as part of the tertiary project rehabilitation that we just finished up. And if I recall right, it was about $3.5 million to add a component of treatment that would remove the salts. And it's certainly something we can revisit, but the challenge with that is you have, that's the capital cost to build it, then you have the operating costs. And as you may recall, we already subsidized recycled water to encourage usage of it. And based on our survey, there's about 80 customers, recycled water customers. We feel the majority of them are happy with the water quality they're getting. Certainly, there are the sensitive users, such as the turf, the greens, where they would like lower salts. But I think overall, to treat that huge body of water just for these select users that have sensitive salt needs, I don't think really pencils out. We will certainly keep looking at that, and I think, having recently come off the hearing on direct potable reuse, we're talking about ultimately the higher use of our wastewater, I think that that needs to be taken into consideration as well.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to public comment. We have a few speaker slips, two minutes here at the podium. We'll start with Lindsay Baker, be followed by Dave Davis. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Lindsay Baker, co-president of the League of Women Voters for Program in Action. The League of Women Voters, Santa Barbara, has been observing the City Council and Water Commission and Planning Commission meetings with deepening interest, along with the deepening drought. It was with a degree of relief that we observed the Water Commission on October 20, developing a detailed plan for coordination of the flow of information between the City Council, Planning Commission, and city staff. Going forward, there will be enhanced participation by City Council liaison, Councilman White, between the council and the Water Commission, enhancing information for all involved. The League of Women Voters, Santa Barbara, is supporting staff recommendation that the city institute the additional water use regulation of prohibiting water of turf lawns in the city, with some exclusions, to increase the water conservation measures already implemented by the city. By nature, Santa Barbara is a semi-arid climate, and water-thirsty lawns are not appropriate in general landscaping. We all hope that this step might be our last to see us through the wet winter. We are reassured by the fact that city staff is taking the additional step of now doing longer-term projections and planning. We understand that this is not an easy step for the city, possibly incurring a $1.6 million loss in water fees that they will have to contend with. Lake Kachuma is under attack by nature and possibly by our fellow water users. Our first line of defense is conservation. League of Women Voters, Santa Barbara, supports this staff recommendation of banning turf water. Thank you.
Dave Davis will be followed by Anna Marie Gott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Dave Davis. I'm representing the city's Water Commission today. We did consider this matter twice in the last two months, and in both times unanimously supported staff's recommendation to you for the turf grass ban. We're very, very concerned, as expressed in the staff report, about the potential interruption of any of the current supplies that we're planning on, and what that would have in terms of catastrophic effects upon this community if that occurred in the next 12 to 18 months. To that degree, I think there's a majority of the Water Commission has been hoping that this turf grass ban would be considered earlier, and we're very happy to see it go forward. Again, we passed on a recommendation unanimously, a strong recommendation to you, to support staff's recommendation in that regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anna Marie Gott will be followed by Natasha, and then Karen Martin will be the final speaker.
Good afternoon. Staff has again come to the city council, asking it to implement a turf...
Ms. Gott, are you here for yourself or for allied?
For myself.
Thank you.
Can I start over now?
I did, I just, I redid it. Go ahead.
Okay. Staff has again come to the city council, asking it to implement a turf grass lawn moratorium, which penalizes current residents and allows new development to proceed unchecked. Other cities are putting in, are requiring building moratoriums in place, and Santa Barbara should follow their example. Our citizens do not need to conserve more, do need to conserve more water, there is no doubt about that. However, questions we are not asking, but need to know the answer to before these decisions are made include, will residents report each other to reduce usage? Has a program like this worked here or elsewhere? And if so, what were the relative savings? If there's a shortfall, will staff need to be hired to actually patrol neighborhoods? Why is staff intent only on providing a single solution for water conservation? Reducing water consumption can and should come from a variety of sources, not just one. The city should be looking at other ways to conserve water now and in the future, such as halting new developments and prohibiting new construction and refilling of pools, spas, and fountains. It should also be reevaluating the use of ag meters to ensure that they are used for food production, not lawns. We should also be promoting programs that are going to help replenish our groundwater. That includes building stormwater depressions throughout the city to collect storm water. And require, not offer, require leak detection checkups. This could actually represent an average water loss of 32,000 gallons per home per year. And with the number of homes we have in Santa Barbara, that could save 372 acre feet.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Natasha, and then Karen Martin.
Hi, Natasha Todorowick. Like a lot of us, I've been doing a lot to save water. I haven't been watering my lawns, shower in the bucket, do dishes in the bucket, throw that on the trees, and so on and so forth. And what I noticed was CVS was washing down, actually hosing their entire parking lot. And what they spent in water in one hour was tons more than I've used in the last three years. It was really shocking. And I think a lot of the water, a lot of residents are doing their very best to conserve water. And I think a lot of really great efforts have gone into conserving water. But our biggest users tend to be industrial. So I'd like you to think about where the water is being used, who's using it, and where we need those restrictions to go. So yeah, let's keep doing what we're doing with the residents. Let's... Let's restrict watering of lawns. My lawn hasn't been watered. But let's also look at the builders, let's look at the industrial, let's look at every ounce of water. Because if we have a glass, we can see when our water's going down. But when we've got a tap, we're used to turning it on and seeing it flow. And seeing it stop, as some cities have, is a shocking thing. It's very hard to get our minds around it. So let's stop water use everywhere we can. Thanks.
Karen Martin.
Hi. We live on Oak Park Lane, and I'm a constituent of you. Most of our trees are extremely stressed from the drought, and many will not survive. And that's really what defines Oak Park. No one has nice lawns. We've all been conserving. Our whole, our own Oak Park has become just a dust and mud-filled park. And there's no grass really left in the whole town. But I think this plan is really well thought out, but there's a couple of questions I have. And I want to know why we keep building more and more rental units and business units for more new people to move to town when every individual or family moving here will be using more of our valuable resources like water? Why are we encouraging any growth at all without shoring up our infrastructure to include more traffic flow, parking, and more water? The city is getting more and more crowded with traffic and parking becoming a huge problem. But I think it's almost too much to ask for us to conserve more without conserving on growth. And we already have cut back so much, and now we need to cut back on the growth. Where are the meaningful incentives for the people to do their landscaping, to change out their landscaping for artificial turf? I didn't hear anything about changing out to artificial turf. And where are the meaningful incentives for homeownership? If we are renting our homes, we're not going to care as much about our precious resources as if we are owning our homes. And so I'm asking you to look at other ways to get more citizens involved in the community and care about our resources. Thank you.
Okay. Well, that concludes public comments. So it's back to the council, and there's some recommendations that staff have for us. Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to pursue, if we could, the turf watering ban proposal. Where do we stand today? What is staff looking for from council? I think, my gut feeling is that we've turned the corner, or we are turning the corner on that as a council. Just want to make sure that we're staying in sync. So could you-
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Wyatt, thank you. In your packet was a proposed redlined version of the regulations that we are recommending. And we're looking for any feedback that the council has at this point. We will be happy to incorporate that, but our plan is to bring that back on December 6th for adoption by the council.
Okay, so December 6th is the target at this point. I know that I hopefully get feedback from colleagues today on that. I certainly hope that this council is ready to, and that is as soon as that could happen.
Well, if there's a strong commitment by the council and no significant changes, potentially could work with our city administrators, see if we can't get on to the November 22nd council meeting. If you want us to bring that back faster, we can. We're still looking at a January 1st implementation, just because we're going to need to ramp up internally with how we're going to operate. But we could bring it back-
So January, well, no, I mean, there's no, to be shuffling paper around a couple of weeks sooner doesn't help us. But as far as implementation, January 1st is where, what the target is. And, okay, well, great. I certainly support that as a next step, and I look forward to hearing what others have to say there. I want to make a comment, too, about comparing this to the last drought. We had a tool then that's been taken away from us that was the most effective tool besides our community's awareness, and that was rates. And that tool was taken away from us by Proposition 218. 25 years ago, if you hit a certain, you use a certain amount of water, it was like putting your finger in a light socket. It just, you got, it got your undivided attention in a big hurry, and you dropped your water use. And unfortunately, and I think it's a little bit like the unintended consequences of Proposition 13. Lots of good things came out of Prop 218, but a downside was that we lost that ability to just make conservation happen with the most efficient tool possible, which is our pocketbook.
Mr. Hodgekis.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A bunch of questions, and a little all over the park here. Regarding groundwater, it's only replenished by rain? Do we get any seepage from Golida or someplace?
Madam Mayor.
Can we work on that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hodgekis, yes, it is recharged by rainfall and to our creeks, and that's basically the way we recharge our groundwater basin. As I mentioned about seawater intrusion, that's not the type of recharge we want to get into our basin, and that's why it's important that we manage that closely. Because as we pull down that groundwater basin, where the level drops below the sea, and basically we can start to see that migration of seawater back inland, which would be very destructive to our basin for the long term. So we're watching that closely.
How does the Montecito Water District and our negotiations with them affect what we will get from the D cell? I realize it's not settled, so it's an open-ended question.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hodgekis, right now, the amount of water that we are in discussions with Montecito is independent of what the city was going to need to deal with this drought. So we're kind of separate issues at this time.
Where would that water come from, though?
It would be D cell, and it would be based on the expansion of the facility to meet their needs. So it would be until, you know, be separate to us. It would be an independent, we would not commit to giving them any water until that plant could make that water available for them.
And we would get a fair chunk of money to help us finance the whole thing, correct?
The concept would be that they would pay their fair share, yes.
Probably cringing over there now if they're listening to this. Regarding the turf ban, if we do that, could we be a little flexible and add the proviso of hand-watering would be permitted on a limited basis? The only reason I say that is there going to be instances that we cannot foresee where some sort of watering might be legitimate, but hand-watering is going to be very limited because it's so trying. But still, it might resolve some issues that we don't see right now.
Councilmember Hodgekis, we did discuss that at length internally, and in fact, we did discuss it with Water Commission. And where we reached, and I mean, it'd be a good lesson for a lot of people, is that if they had to water their turf by hand, they will quickly grow tired of it because it is amazing how much water a turf takes. Typically, it's about four feet of water is what's needed to keep a turf in good, you know, living condition.
Right.
And so does someone to sit out there day after day and try to imply that water-
They're not going to do that.
It's just kind of futile. And that's where we kind of landed with, let's just save them the pain and not make that an option. But if the council as a whole feels strongly about it, we certainly could put that back in. It's just not something we think is-
Well, actually, the reason I bring it up is precisely what you say, because it's not going to happen very much, and there might be limited areas where that might be appropriate. And I don't want somebody to feel they're violating the law if they do that. Are gardens excluded from irrigation? We're not lumping them in with turf in this case?
Right. Councilmember Hodgekis, this is just turf grass. Gardens are exempt. We're encouraging tree watering. We're encouraging shrubs. Those permanent beneficial use is much higher than turf, particularly ornamental turf.
We mentioned on Slide 42, I think, that under rationing, if we do that, requires establishing a water budget for every customer. I got a call from a citizen who said, you know, really, you don't really care if we water our lawns or not, you just want us to save water. And I said, that's true. So this would actually fit in with that. If we gave people a target, how they reach that target could be their choice.
Correct. There are so many things to like about rationing. It seems very simple. Everybody gets put on a budget, and everybody lives with that budget. The challenge is there are so many nuances to managing 27,000 different little budgets, and that's what makes it difficult. You know, you're going to have people with larger properties, some with smaller properties, and various family sizes. And so it gets into the difficulty of trying to manage that. But in principle, it does make sense. Here, here's your five acre, you know, your five HCF, you can choose to bathe with it or water your yard, we don't care. And so in principle, it sounds very simple. I really like that, but it's the implementation that becomes extremely difficult.
Right. Well, I would think that it would be an enormous amount of work to figure out the rationing part you're talking about. If you tried that, when could we see it, do you know?
We are working towards having a pretty well-laid-out plan by spring for further discussion. And with that, it'll kind of show what that budget will be. I mean, for the average user, we were thinking it's going to be somewhere in the six HCF range, and we, you know, our average customer's using about nine. So we're getting down to that point where there really wouldn't be much water at all for outdoor water usage for a typical family. And so that's why we think that the turf grass ban is a nice compromise, and then it goes after and starts to prioritize. Because the message that we have today is kind of weird. We want people to water their trees. A lot of people have stopped watering their trees to save water. We want you to water your trees. We don't want you to water your grass. We're helping to prioritize that landscaping so that when we come out of this drought, we haven't lost half of our urban forest.
And those are monthly figures you were just talking, right? Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Ms. Maria.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. To address the recommendations, I support B and C, which are funding for, one, a public outreach program consultant. C is to increase legal fees. Unfortunately, our drought is costing us some money. In terms of recommendation, A, in terms of water use regulations, I stated strongly the last time we talked about it, I do support a ban on, or water restrictions on watering your lawn. Yes, what a great idea. And rationing sounds like a good idea. I agree with you that there are some benefits. People will get a certain amount of water, and they get to do what they want to do with it. And I think the benefit of that is that when they go over their amount, they're hit with a penalty or a fee. It really is time to be serious about water conservation. And Ms. Martin left, but I wanted to just ask her kindly that there's a way to advocate for homeownership opportunities and not suggest that renters are not invested in our community and that they don't save water. My housemate and I are renters, and we are extremely painfully water-conservative. So I just heard something in her comments and would like to make that note. Thank you.
The Hart.
Is there discussion amongst the South Coast water agencies about expanding the pipeline between, that serves state water from Solvang to the lake? Is that, what, how expensive is that in the context of expanding the D cell plant? I don't think we've ever had a conversation about that, but the information that you talked about, about extending the pipeline all the way to the dam, makes me think that, you know, that's another thing that ought to be on the table.
There hasn't been any discussion on that. I would imagine we're talking 100 million-plus kind of number. I mean, it's a fairly lengthy, several miles of a pretty massive pipeline, and I know the route. What we ended up doing is we actually, as part of the agreement, we took over the pipeline that actually fed the San Ynez irrigation or water district. We took over that pipeline in exchange for they could pull out water, state water out of the pipeline, and we would use this existing pipeline to save a substantial amount of money. So that isn't currently on the docket to look at expansion of that this time.
And then in terms of moving ahead with the conveyance for D cell, I think we should just be doing that. I don't, you know, I know there's additional engineering work required and everything, but it seems like, you know, if we're going to have the D cell system, it ought to be fully functional, and it's, and a critical element of that is the conveyance. So as far as I'm concerned, if you want to bring forward an action plan to have the council make a decision about that sooner rather than later, I'm fully supportive. Similarly, I see the effort to have renewable energy for the D cell plant as being intricately connected to this whole system. I don't, I don't think it's a separate thing. It has been a separate thing just from in terms of the staff workload, you know, to get us to this point, to have the D cell plant online. And I understand, you know, that's been necessary. But I'm encouraged to see that you're going to be coming forward in December with a presentation about that. I would hope that would also be an action plan, not just another conversation about all the different options, but, you know, what specifically do we need to do to make that happen? Because I think with the conveyance, there's an opportunity to put all this together and potentially get some of the low-interest state money for the entire system. To me, this seems like it's all part of the same system. The D cell plant's not done until it's got a power supply and it's got a way to get the water to customers. So it ought to be considered as an entire system. And then, you know, I have been trying, you know, to see if we can figure out a way to avoid the turf ban, but it seems as though, you know, just fate and time and events are moving us to that direction. So, you know, reluctantly, I'm willing to go there. I do find it fascinating that we continue to hit the targets for water savings just by the approach that we are. I recognize the biggest issue in that whole conversation, I think, is just the contingency factor. You know, we may be able to hit the 40% mark just by asking people to voluntarily conserve water. They are. That's exactly what they're doing today, 41%. And that, that is really before the full impact of the rate increases has happened. So I expect that we're going to keep hitting this 40% mark. But the fact that there is no slack in the system, that there isn't any margin for error, is getting me to be understanding that we probably need the turf ban.
The Ross.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I agree with my colleagues, Mr. Hart and Mr. White both brought up the fact that the council seems to be moving towards a turf ban. And we talked about rates earlier and whatnot. You know, the hard part is, is everything we talk about along those lines further kind of lays it on the people that have been the real heroes of this drought so far, which has been the residents of Santa Barbara. They've overperformed whatever we've asked for so far. So to lay on the extra restriction is kind of a matter of optics on our part, as much as anything. And you had spoken one time, Mr. Hagmark, about the drought weariness that people will get at some point in time. You just can't keep hitting them over the head with that same concept, even though it's a real thing. And clearly, that, the video of Kachuma is pretty sobering. But in terms of optics, and I know we've talked about it in terms of numbers, but the comments that I know, I'm sure I'm not alone up here on the dais, every day you get the comment, look at what we're doing out there in terms of development projects, projects in the pipeline, whether it be commercial units, residential units, or whatever. And we talk about them in terms of acre-feet water budget. But once again, from a gut standpoint, as a resident, as people who keep doing the job, and then we keep coming back, you're doing great, now here's what we want you to do. It's kind of like going to that aerobics class where only 500 more with your left foot now. I mean, it's, and I don't know if there's a meter moratorium or a building moratorium out there in the future. I don't know if that's even the right thing. I don't know how successful that was, was back in the 90s, I think, the last time we did that. But is part of our strategy, I mean, there's got to be a certain sense of due diligence on the part of all agencies up and down the South, up and down the state, which says, you know, you've done this, but other agencies are doing that, you know, in terms of what could be potentially out there in terms of statewide relief, disaster, or whatever. Is there any part of that we're talking about? Or is it, I mean, is there a, I'm trying to get to the point where, I mean, this community's really been rowing towards the same shore. And it's been great, but how do we keep that esprit de corolle alive without pummeling them to death with the next piece of, I know, we can't make up the news, but I mean, it's still, it just looks weird to see all this, all these things going on, and yet we're coming back to the source and going, okay, you did great, now here's your next task. I mean, is there any part of that that's, it's a bigger-picture thing that's not really out there, or?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Ross, I mean, everything you brought up, that is the challenge with us. We've been talking for a long time about development and its impacts. And although it's small, it's still an impact. We're, say, every drop counts. And I think that's, it's really the tough decision that the council has to wrestle with. And I think in September, when we talked about development restrictions, we decided that that was something that can wait. And I think the next opportunity to really look at that again will be in spring, where we're talking about potentially the need for rationing if it gets that bad. But, you know, the current plan, if we get the savings we're looking for out of turf grass, we should have sufficient water to water our trees and to get through next summer. You know, development, again, just a reminder that it was, our average over the last 10 years has been about 27 acre-feet a year. The community uses between right now is down to around 9,500 acre-feet. So it's just a small drop in the bucket. We see, you know, in the summer months, we see a couple hundred acre-feet of evaporation every month from Kachuma, just to give that- see a couple hundred acre feet of evaporation every month from Kachuma, just to give that kind of scale to things. And I think last year, new development brought on like six acre feet of new demand. So it's, it's difficult because Santa Barbara is so built out, there isn't like just open spaces being developed. We're talking about spaces that are already existing facilities. They already had existing water use, usage. It was typically, they didn't have the latest water saving devices on, on the property. And so a lot of these properties, when they go through and redo them, they're, they're actually a lot, a meaner, leaner, meaner development than when they went in, in the sense that their water usage is significantly reduced. Their landscaping is very limited in what we're allowing them to plant. And so, you know, that's something that I think, it is a perception, though. The perception is there. I mean, the facts support that it's very small, but the perception is there. And I think it's going to be something that we continue to have to revisit.
Well, I get the math and I get the facts, but all of us, when we try to tell a constituent face to face that that's the way it is, give you that look like you're from Mars, because they see these massive projects going forward, and they see swimming pools and jacuzzis and whatnot. And it's, 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 it's hard. And I don't know, I mean, I think you guys have been very good at communication with the public. But like I said, we will come back with the next thing we want you to do. I think, I think actually that the individual water budget might be an effective tool in terms of letting people control their own fate. I mean, we have the rate system now and the tier system, which is a tool. And it's clearly been effective in the way we performed. But the average, you know, what, what per capita consumption is in our community versus other communities, and what a target goal should be to get us to that next level. I think that might be a very valuable, valuable way to go. Once again, it was opposed to putting in the hammer, letting people understand the information and having a hand in their own fate and their own community. I think, I think they've proven out so far, they're pretty good at it. So I think the more we give them that, I think it's the better, better way to go. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to go to Mr. Dominguez next, but before I do, we have a four o'clock item for the interviews for appointments, and that should not take too long. So those of you who are here for item 11, we're going to do that after the appointments process. You can stay and listen. You can get a cup of coffee and come back. I just wanted to give you a heads up just because we have a, a time area for the appointments. And I, I don't, just looking around the room, don't see that many there. So maybe that should take maybe 20 minutes. But there's no way we're going to get through this and item 11 in 10 minutes. So, okay. So just as a heads up. Mr. Dominguez?
Thank you. I have, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Hagmark. The, someone mentioned the moratoriums that the cities next to us have imposed. Do you know what they're doing or how long they've had that going?
Yes. So we speak about Galita Water District. They do have a moratorium on meters. It's part of their safe ordinance. So it was something that was passed by the voters a long time ago. When they reach a certain threshold, they just automatically have to ban issuance of any new meters. So they don't really have much discretion in that. It's, the discretion has been taken out. Montecito, back in 2014, when they declared an emergency, they stopped issuing any new meters as well in their service area.
Okay. Thank you. The, the housing issue is what's driving my comments, and it's partly because of the demand that the housing pulls, but then also how we're treating energy because the electricity that's being used, do we know what the cost is going to be for the electricity? What's the budget for the electricity? Because it's driving water through all these filters and all these pumps require electricity. Do we have any estimate on the electricity?
Yes. We know how much, and we have a ballpark on the costs. I could have Mr. Dewey, when he comes back in December, provide some more information on that.
And are we locked into a fixed price? Or is that something where?
It, we're somewhat sheltered in our price, but it's not, it's not that we're locked in. Because the city, the way that the agreement works for operating the facility, the city is paying the electrical bill. And our agreement with our operator is they've guaranteed their electrical usage won't exceed a certain amount of electricity per acre foot of water. If they exceed that, they're on the hook for paying the electrical bill above that amount. If they are able to operate the facility using less electricity, we split the savings in, in electrical savings.
Okay. Will this end up being one of the more expensive costs of water sources?
Yes, it will be comparable to state water.
Okay. And, and what I'm driving at here is, when we did the, the city plan, it said 75% of these jobs, and it's talking about non-residential growth is projected to generate up to 4,264 new jobs within the city over the next 20 years. Approximately 75% of these jobs being filled by workers earning lower and moderate incomes. And this is Table 19.11 on the city plan. So 70, 75% of these jobs are going to go to workers earning lower and moderate incomes. So the, if you look at that percentage and the housing that's being built, and the water need for that housing, it doesn't match the housing that's being built, which is being built for moderate and above. And so I just handed out this chart, and it's really small. But what it shows you is, for renter households in the above moderate category, you have 5,782 households. 604 of those are overpaying, which means they're paying more than 30% of their budget. That's only 10% of that households. If you go to the next column, which is moderate, of those 2,800 renter households, 2,300 are paying over the 30%. That's 82%. So these are kind of flipped around numbers. 82% of the lower income folks are paying over what they should be over the 30% threshold, which means they have a much more limited capacity to move. So they're basically going to be commuting in from out of town if they can't afford housing here and the jobs are here. And that's what our general plan tells us, is 75% of the jobs that are going to be created between 2011 and 2031 are going to be low income. So when we look at the housing we're building, the, the outcome is, people are going to be commuting into town. The AUD is actually dislocating folks because some of the houses that are being demolished to make room for the new AUD products are housing very low and low income folks. So if we were to shift AUD to actually help some of these lower income groups, that money actually stays in the local economy. Because what happens is, for working class folks, if they get, if they save $100 because their rent goes down, they spend that money locally versus people who are in the, the top 25%, which is what AUD is helping now. They tend to spend that money traveling and going out of town. So there's a double whammy. The other effect is-
Bring this back to the drought update and how this relates to the recommendations?
Yes, and I'm going to bring it back.
Thank you.
Because this housing is using water, and even just watering the dirt as we're building it, is, when you drive by these construction sites, or if you're driving around Marburg in the area and you see how much water they're using. So I was saying, these folks, because it's 82% of their, of them, they can't just move around in town. They have to go where the housing is cheaper. And literally, the commute is what's causing greenhouse gases. And why do we have this drought? Because of the greenhouse gases. This is the result of climate change and global warming. So we're actually, at the time, we're trying to fight the drought, causing housing patterns that are causing more greenhouse gases. All these people sitting stuck in traffic for an hour from here to Ventura and back are making the problem worse. So another thing that we're looking at in, in Appendix B of our Climate Action Plan, which is part of our general plan, is we're looking at sea rise level change. And again, what's driving sea rise level change? Greenhouse gases. So we're putting in this D cell plant, we're using non-reusable, reusable energy. What does that drive up? Greenhouse gases. So all of these programs that we've implemented recently, we need the water, but we have to measure the impact on greenhouse gases and do everything we can. So I'm glad that, that Mr. Hart brought up, what are we going to do about alternative energy to reduce the impact of these greenhouse gases? And then, one more point. So the other problem with the AUD is, is it's shifted property costs. So because the density makes property more valuable for developers, realtors raise the price, or developers raise the price. So now, mobile home parks on the east side have gone into the market. So we saw Punta Gorda, that's the one along the freeway that went from mobile homes to these manufactured homes that are going for at least $2,000 a month rent. We have the Tropical Gardens on, on 214 South Canada that was just sold for $5.8 million. And again, this is, this is the best housing stock we have for affordable housing in the city, bar none. And the Tropical Gardens is also for sale. At one point, it was pending. It may have fallen out of escrow. But these are, these are the best source of affordable homes that we're going to lose to developers. And at the same time, this is going to increase greenhouse gases. So what I would recommend is that we follow the recommendations for A, B, and C, but we also put in a moratorium for a year on this new AUD building. So we can take a minute and, and look at the result. We have 1,400 units in the pipeline, already in the first five years of the general plan, which is what the EIR contemplated for 10 years. So we're way ahead of the game. I think everyone, if there's one thing we can agree on, is we're way ahead of what people expected in terms of building when AUD was, was implemented. So that would be my recommendation. So I would move that we accept the staff recommendation and ask staff to come back with the plan for a, a one-year moratorium while we look at the issues.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. White, your light was on. Did you want to?
I wanted to, to turn to a topic which I had raised a couple of times to the council, and that is the, my proposal for a growth management ordinance, which is a little bit of the best of both worlds, I believe, in that it does not, that, instead of a, a moratorium, it, it allows the developers to continue their processing of projects, but it meters out the development on a, on a, on a basis of, and then the magic number that we've, has been tossed out has been 100 units a year. That number is subject to conversation. It's another approach which is, allows more development activity to be processed, and yet restricts the consumption of resources. And it isn't just water, it's the impacts of, of this new, of the AUD process, which then can, I think of it as a way to increase the compatibility of the AUD system by having not so many projects coming in all at once. So I haven't seen yet the, enough votes up here to, to warrant going forward with that, but I might as well raise it up, raise it one more time for folks to consider.
Mr. Hotchkiss? Yes?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. The, the council really can't get into a debate on whether to impose a moratorium on AUD.
Thank you.
You can, you can direct the staff to return with an agenda item, so you can have that debate.
That was my understanding of the motion, but-
Well, I heard the motion to say a plan for an AUD moratorium.
That is correct. Okay. So just suggestion of either drop the motion or amend the motion? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes. The council can certainly direct staff to come back with an agenda item to discuss this issue. But I, you, you can't get into a detailed discussion of whether to impose a, an AUD moratorium on this agenda.
That's not how I, okay, I got it.
Madam Mayor, I think that for clarity purposes, and also because we want, what we want to have on the, the water issues, we want to have, we don't want to make this a divisive issue. So I would like to withdraw my second on that. And I'm, I'm willing to second that piece, but it would, I would ask it that it'd be a second motion, a second motion. So I'd ask that the maker of the motion come forward with the staff recommendations for the water supply, and let's have that as one vote. And as I say, I'm certainly supportive of, of your other piece, but to make it separate.
Okay. So just to clarify, you are, you are withdrawing your second of the current motion. So there is no motion on the table. And so we're back to whether we wanted to have two different motions. We still have the recommendations.
I guess what I could do is make a substitute motion, Madam Mayor, and that is the staff recommendations on the drought update, recommendations per staff. And that includes the turf watering ban coming forward.
All right. Is there a second to that substitute motion?
I'll second that.
Mr. Rouse? Okay. Okay. So we're, so do we understand what the motion is now?
No, Madam Mayor, please.
The motion now is the staff recommendation with giving staff direction to come back with the turf watering ban. That's the motion.
Right. Madam Mayor, may I, may I say, you know, we had a three-hour discussion of joint meeting of the Planning Commission and the City Council, talking about our average unit size density incentive program. It, it's inappropriate to hijack this meeting, which is about water, going again and again attacking AUD. And what I heard, Councilmember Dominguez, in your arguments, is that we need more rental units. You know, this is what I conclude. And, and, you know, there's a proper way to, to discuss these issues. And I think there's been some inappropriate motions made today. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Well, to bring it back to water, I support what your recommendation is, but I would like you to consider the hand watering option for people on limited amounts. And secondly, I think that the rationing would be good in philosophically, because it really would have everybody in the city working towards the goal that we all want. So I, I'd just throw that out as a bee in your bonnet, but I'm sure we're going to go forward with this. Thank you for listening.
I haven't really said much anything except managing the meeting, but I will say that since our last drought update about a month ago, had the opportunity to go out to Lake Kachuma or Kachuma Meadows, stand in the meadow. And it's, and that was just a few weeks ago, and I think it even looks more serious even then. And there's nothing like seeing it in person. I mean, the drone, that drone video is pretty significant as well. But, and I think we really need to do absolutely everything possible to encourage, further encourage everyone to keep on doing all the great work that they're doing. And I appreciate, Mr. White, you were saying, can we make this faster in terms of implementing a drought, a turf ban? I think the, the education, just by doing this and moving this forward and bringing it back and getting it ready to go, in and of itself, is going to get people to stop watering their lawns. And then really what we're implementing January 1st is the, you know, the letters and the fines and things like that. But, you know, I think the next couple of months will be really focused on that education piece. So I don't want you to have to spend extra time rushing an agenda report if it means the implementation doesn't really have any changes. And I think Mr. White was agreeing to that, too. So, so that's extremely important. The rationing stuff, I think we should tee it up to have that conversation, and hopefully it rains before then. It's sort of like not bringing your umbrella that day, and, and so it will rain, that kind of thing. So, you know, I think we need to have that conversation. So I'll be supporting the current motion. Mr. Dominguez?
I want to reiterate, for anyone who's not clear on this point, water is a hugely important issue. And housing is what drives water usage in, in Santa Barbara. There's not enough time in the day for us to spend debating these, these hugely important issues. Three hours to discuss a 20-year general plan, to me, has not seemed extraordinary. I think it's, it's based on the emails that we've all received from people, articles in the paper we've read. People are very concerned about the water supply, and they're concerned about the amount of building. So state law is clear, and we had a, we had a tutorial last week about state law. Council members are allowed to bring things up at this meeting that are related to agenda items and ask staff to come back. So it's not largely inappropriate when people are here to hear about what the city's doing with their water. And we've been not as innovative as we needed to be. And maybe people are sensitive about that. But that's, that's something that we shouldn't have to dwell on. Let's, let's move forward. This doesn't have to be divisive. Let's think about what we can do to get solar panels up, to make this drought less impactful on the environment. And as we're building housing, why are we building for-profit housing for the top 25% richest renters in town? I would love to see as many renters as possible become owners.
Madam Mayor, that's inaccurate. And I, I'm not going to sit here and let Councilmember Dominguez put misinformation out into the public. I, you know, actually, I walked in here today, Councilmember Dominguez, Madam Mayor, ready to just maybe talk about a building moratorium. I'm feeling everybody on that. But, you know, let's be a little more sophisticated about it, okay? Let's have some discussions when we're supposed to be talking about that. Thank you.
Why don't we get to-
I just want to respond. If, if she's going to attack me, I'm going to respond. Ms. Bjork, could you please turn to the last page of the handout?
And then we need to get voting and move on to other items on this agenda.
You know, we're all paid a lot of money to be here. I think our city wants us to spend as much time on this as, as necessary. And there's a lot of facts that haven't been brought to the surface, and I'm going to bring them to the surface. So Column 1 says, "Public housing, workforce, and senior housing." And the fourth row down, household, household size of four, $67,350. Now, this comes from the Santa Barbara Housing Authority. So household size of four. Now, if you look at our page, which is the third page, if you wouldn't mind doing the honors. One more, please. I'm sorry. One more, please, I'm sorry. Upper-middle income, middle income, $92,154. So we're using different numbers than our own housing authority. In fact, the word, the term workforce housing comes the Urban Land Institute, and they've defined it as 60 to 120. So we've eschewed the definition for workforce housing that most of the modern world uses. We applied for workforce housing grants as a city for the state of California in the year 2004 to 2006, and these are the definitions the state used. For whatever reason, these worked into this, into this worksheet. And that's fine. You can ignore the phraseology, but it's the numbers you have to look at. So we're subsidizing housing for people making $123,000. And if you can go back a slide, we're not subsidizing, I'm sorry, we're not pushing housing for people between the 50 and 120. And the general plan indicated that 75% of the workers who'd be added into the economy over 20 years are going to be in the, in those three categories. So why are we subsidizing housing for the richest 25% of renters when the people who are between 50 and 120% are not being subsidized? The housing authority cuts off subsidies for a lot of their programs at 50% or below. So the 50 to 120 is really an area that's not covered. So these are the folks who need it a lot more. Again, that's, if you can go back to the first slide, please.
Madam Mayor, can we schedule another discussion about this, please? I don't want to go back and forth, and, yeah, thank you.
Let me just bring it back.
I'm almost done.
I mean, really, almost really done, because we got to move forward here on the item.
Under moderate housing, it says 82% of renter households are overpaying rent. Those are not the folks that the AUD is helping. If you look at the units that are going in, they're going in at that higher income level. So the 82% who are overpaying are not being helped. So at the same time that the city created a program that's not helping the people who we need to help, it's draining water from the system.
Madam Mayor, I just suggest that the public educate itself on this issue. We're not having a full discussion on this matter.
Okay. Ms. Murray, I appreciate you stopping. Stop interrupting. We can, and if you want to put your light on and say something, you can. But I really want to try to have an orderly and civil discussion here, even though we might disagree on, on the things. I think we got your point, Mr. Dominguez. So let me, we have a motion on the table. We have a motion on the table. The motion is for the staff recommendation with direction to come back with the lawn watering ban, watering ban. My Newark is coming out. And that's, that's the motion. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Okay. Is there another motion? Okay. I don't hear one, so with that, we, I need, I need to take a stretch. So let's take a five-minute break.